The submitting of the guests in City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls for City Clerk Iverson Neston for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
President Echols is absent today and our meeting is being chaired by our President Protem, Councilman Cannon. Councilman Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Harris to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to come together to transact the business of this city. We ask that everything that we do be pleasing to you. We thank you for your mercy and your kindness, your generosity toward us even though we don't deserve it. As we go through these proceedings today, we ask that you will make sure that everything that we do is pleasing to you and we will forever give you all the praise and all the glory. Bless this city, bless the citizens of this city, bless these United States, and Lord, those persons who are making those great decisions. As far as war is concerned, be with them, touch their hearts, let them make the decision that you deem necessary, and we will continue to thank you. These blessings we ask in Jesus' Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Our fair allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Finance Committee Work Session City Council Meeting had on September 16th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of the accounts for the week of September 12th through the 18th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mayor. Unfinished business, we have none today. Number nine, this is time and place, as advertised, Kentucky Public Hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to, are in favor of resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 1109 Fourth Avenue in District 3. The last known owners are State of Alabama and Nathaniel King. Is anyone here would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Yes.
Can you come to the microphone, please, and state your name and address for the City Clerk?
My name is Nathaniel King. Address, you say?
Yes, sir.
1120 Wells Avenue. I wanted to know what kind of nuisance do we have on the property?
It's a property located on Fourth Avenue.
Yes.
1109 Fourth Avenue?
Yes, 1109 Fourth Avenue.
Nobody has contacted you about any?
No, I just got a letter in the mail with a hearing on nuisance on it. I know the people next door, across the street from there, they bring trash right next to it and throw trash right there. But the yard and everything, I keep it clean, pick up the paper on it, everything. So what seem to be the nuisance on the land?
Well, we don't know yet.
Mr. Harbison's going to come forward next.
Mr. Harbison's going to have to tell us. He'll tell us.
That's what I wanted to know.
Okay, we'll let you know in a minute.
Does anyone here wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. This case involves two garage apartments directly behind 1109 Fourth Avenue. We started case in May of 2012. Over two years ago, there've been no improvements to this property. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Mr. King, it looks like here what Mr. Harbison's talking about, the building's about to fall down, there's no front doors on the building, is that correct? And the windows are out on some of them?
Yes, sir.
Coming back to them.
And what he's saying is he started this nuisance abatement case in year 2012 and nothing's been done on it?
Sure, I just have got the land from the State of Alabama, so my plant closed down. So now I'm in really looking for another job so I can go put new doors and glasses on it. If that's the case then, how long you would give me to put that on there?
You'll probably need to talk with Mr. Harbison, see what all needs to be done. I was just looking at the picture and this is in someone else's district, in District 3, and I was just looking at the pictures, just what I seen.
It used to be.
So just go get a building permit, go ahead and start working on the windows and doors and stuff and paint the outside?
The best thing to do is just get with Mr. Harbison and talk with him, because I don't know what all needs to be done. I was just looking at the pictures, just what I seen, you know?
Okay, Dan.
You just got the property from the State of Alabama, you said?
Yes, sir. And then my plant closed down up in Boas there, so I was out of funds to work on it then.
It used to be in my district. Now, since Bill, I would recommend if it was still in my district, a 14-day table to him and Mr. Harbison to get together and see if they can work out some schedule.
Okay.
But it's not in my district anymore. It's up to the other council member.
Okay, Dan.
Well, we've got to see what we're going to do. We ain't do yet.
The Chair?
I'm not sure whether the district changed until before the election or do they?
Folks on Fourth Avenue voted for you. They voted against you, won. They changed already.
I think they were all far behind me.
That's what I'm here saying. It's in your district now. Yeah.
Well, you probably got a good idea there, Rob. I will ask for a 14-day table, and you get with Mr. Harbison and find out what you need to do, but you only have a short time to respond to this, or we will condemn you.
No second.
Okay. Since we don't have any more further discussion, Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 14 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 14 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 136 Bradford Court in District 4. Tuscaloosa LLC Mutual Savings Credit Union being the last known owners. Is anyone here would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone here wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves a burned house. We started our case in May of this year. There've been no improvements, no permits to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public?
Before you do that, let me ask Brian a question about this Fourth Avenue. The gentleman said he just acquired the property. Is that, are you?
From the State.
You don't know?
As far as knowing whether or not he acquired the property, he is listed on the title opinion with the State of Alabama. State of Alabama was previous owner. I don't know exactly what interest he has in it without looking at the title opinion. I don't know if this is something that has a right of redemption period from a previous owner. You know, I can get with Lee after the meeting and determine that.
I was just curious about.
That's why I suggested.
I mean, he's listed, obviously, or he wouldn't be here today.
Yeah. That's why I suggested two weeks, give y'all time to work it out.
All right, thank you.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 142 Bradford Court in District 4. Tuscaloosa LLC Mutual Savings Credit Union WBT LLC being the last known owners. Is anyone here would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves a burned duplex. It's actually next door to the previous case you just looked at. We started it in May, been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
I've got a question.
Okay.
When we have one like this, it's a burned duplex, and a sub as well, do we ever contact the mortgage company about just deeding the property to us, where we would have to foreclose on the lien or anything?
If the mortgage company is listed, then they would receive the same notice that everyone else does.
Well, I know sometimes you just have to go a little bit further, call and ask, but they might just go ahead and deed it to us, you know? These laws are not worth very much either way.
And it definitely ain't going to be worth that once we tear it down. That's adding another couple of thousand dollars, and they probably ain't worth that much.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, I'd like to just mention that these two houses are in Councilman Echols' district, and we usually don't take any action if that person's not here, but Councilman Echols has said that he was in favor of these two structures being demolished.
Thank you. Our final public hearing is an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2015 budget. This ordinance approves the following budgets. General Fund, $48,450,600. Special Revenue Fund, $7,674,300. Debt Service Fund, $6,822,469. Enterprise and Internal Service Funds, $11,525,447. Capital Project Fund, $7,650,000. The proposed general fund budget provides that all entitled full-time employees shall receive a two-step increase which is 2.5 percent. Is anyone here would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week.
Mr. President, at this time, if there's no objection, I'd ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today at its first reading, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
Just a little bit. I think if you look at this, this is a very well-balanced budget. I think the only issue is the fact that we had to come up with some additional monies for special projects or matching projects. Had it not been for the matching projects that we were hoping that we're going to get this year, and we might not get them all, I think this budget would have been excellent in that we wouldn't have had to go into our reserve funds. But we only went into the reserve funds to the tune of matching monies. And I would think, though, when the audit is done for this particular fiscal year, I think we're going to probably make that a wash too. So I think in the end, we probably won't even have to go into our reserve funds at all, so. Administration done a good job. The mayor's real tight. He squeaks when he walks. But that's okay. We don't complain about that. He does a great job when it comes down to the finances. Yeah.
Any further discussion?
When he took over, we were hemorrhaging.
Thank you. It's all right.
From one extreme to the other?
Tightness was needed at that time.
Well, tightness is always needed, and he's done a heck of a job with it. You know, I think we were really in the hole, Mayor. You can talk more about how much we were in the hole, but I do know right now we're in real good shape. The law only requires that we have 10% in reserves, and I think right now we probably got pretty close to 20% in reserve, which is real good.
Yeah, we were at $79 million in debt and about a million and a half in reserve, which is about a half months operating. But with the Finance Department and the council, y'all guys in the last few years have been really good about making the decisions to get us out of the hole, especially with the economic turn-down like we've had. And then the Finance Department with Ms. Rosser, also known as Dr. No, it's real easy to make the right decisions and do what we got to do, because, you know, we've got to watch, we want to help everybody. We've also given eight raises to employees and nine budgets. You don't find many cities, I think, around the nation or in the state have been able to do that. So, but anyway, thank you.
Mayor, one thing I always like to point out is we said that back in 2012, I believe it was, when we took some steps to address our personnel costs, we noted back then that that was a baby step, that we were taking baby steps to get where we needed to be. We were at 75% of our budget, of our general fund budget, being spent on personnel costs. You've heard me say this before, you can't even run a good lemonade stand spending 75 cents of every dollar on the people that are running your business, or your entity, I should say, because the public and private differences are noted when you're talking about a municipality. But we're down now to about 62%, I think it was?
I think that's correct.
67%.
67%. Oh, Lisa's back there, yeah. 67%.
She's got it. 67%, which is still admirable, so you're talking pretty close to a 10% drop. So we're spending more on services now than less on just a handful of people, which is important. Again, you don't ever want, I think now we're getting, we're much closer now to a manageable and reasonable level in terms of what we're spending on personnel costs. And that's important, because if you get upside down in that, just ask the Detroit Three, those legacy expenses will catch up with you and they'll eat you alive. So again, I think it's responsible for us to get where we are now in terms of personnel expenses.
Yeah, I want to add to that. If, I think in, eight years ago, it was 78%, and we kept taking baby steps, like you said. We also capped insurance at 20%. And I know it's a, I forgot the figure exactly, but some people think it's a lot of money, and it is, but if you look around and see what most people pay, my wife is an educator, and I'm on her insurance, we pay even more than that. And our insurance has only increased three times since 1992, but we got it capped where they know exactly what it's going to be every time. But, you know, all that goes into helping preserve the city's finances where if you go bankrupt, like Councilman Williams was talking about, there is no retirement. And our retirement rate was 27%, 26.9, and now I think it's down to 20, which is still second highest in the state. I'm glad we got the money to put money in everybody's retirement. So, you know, we're working on it. Some people think we don't try to look out for the employees, but I assure you, we do. Thanks.
They got me an opponent, got me beat. But that's okay. That's sound government.
I think it'd be very important that everybody realize that the council is the ones who holds the purse strings of the city. We appropriate everything, and it goes through the council. So it's very important that you keep a council on there that has good financial backgrounds and makes some wise decisions financially. You can look around, some cities, they're very close to us, Anniston, Vesper, some others I could name, Pritchard went bankrupt. You get the wrong council people on there making the wrong financial decisions, and that's where you go.
Very true. Call for it, of course. Call for the vote.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one's a resolution awarding bid number 3272 for planning, resurfacing, and traffic strapping on Forest Avenue, Knight Street, and Payton Ridge Avenue. The city engineers recommended awarding the bid to Cartney Construction Company, and the amount is $736,005.39. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one's a resolution authorizing acceptance of property located at 410 Clark Street. Family Savings Credit Union wished to convey this foreclosed property to the city. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this piece of property? This mayor's probably what he was talking about a while ago, if I'm not mistaken, where the credit union just wants to go ahead and give us this piece of property.
Exactly.
Is this correct, what I was talking about a while ago?
Yeah.
Okay. No more discussion, Clerk?
Hopefully, these other folks up here do that before we have to foreclose or file everything. Yeah.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 15 is a resolution authorizing lease agreement with the Gaston Public Library Foundation. This is for the West Wing addition to the library, and the amount is $1 per year for a period of five years, with an additional five-year option to renew. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes. We have the library here with us today to give us discussion on this resolution.
Good morning. This is a result of having too much space and too much stuff. We moved one area of the library, the former Genealogy and Reference Department, upstairs because we ran out of some space downstairs, but that left us with the West Wing available. We have had a Friends of the Library bookstore for quite some time, basically since the inception of the library, I'm pretty sure, and they've outgrown their space. So we've given them the West Wing. This will give them the West Wing of the library. It'll also give them the ability to contract for some deli services that we're very, very excited to be able to begin offering next week after this lease is signed. We want to invite the council and the public to a soft opening of the bookstore next Tuesday at noon, right after the council meeting. So if you can approve that, we'd really appreciate it. We're excited to continue to grow and serve the public in new and exciting ways.
Starbucks coffee?
I work on it.
Do we have any more discussion or comments? If not, Clerk, will you take the vote? I'm sorry.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
We all have some very good news in the paper this morning, that the State Library Convention's going to come to Gaston, and thanks to Greg and Amanda who's working hard to get that done. Y'all may want to make a pitch on this at the end. I guess they do. I'm sorry, probably up to a little premature, maybe. Anyway, we're all proud of them.
Number 16 is a resolution authorizing application acceptance of a grant from Alabama Department of Environmental Management. This is through ADM Recycling Program, and the amount is $122,811.36. This fund will be used to purchase equipment for the city's recycling program, including a truck, forklift, 40 recycled trailers, a floor scale, and clearing streams. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, do we have any today? Amen? We'll bring it up in the department reports. Next one's department reports, Amanda. I'm sorry, wait a minute, let's back up. We do have some new business.
Yes, sir, we do.
We do have some new business. I'm sorry.
Mr. President, I have two items. The first item is a resolution authorizing United Way incentives for employees' contribution. I'd like to ask the item's consent to consider today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
Yes, this is simply a resolution authorizing employees of the city to receive incentives for giving, contributing to United Way.
I think this is basically about the same way we did for the last three or four years.
Drawings.
Okay, Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And the second one, Mr. President, is a resolution authorizing change order number one for planning and resurfacing and restripping on Seventh Avenue, from Seventh to Twelfth Street on Forest Avenue. I'd like to ask unanimous consent to consider today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. President, Mr. Ha, explain this to us, please.
Okay. Yes, sir. This is on the, like you said, the Forest Avenue resurfacing project. It's, I believe, approximately $8,500. This is the summary change order that we have to do to close out the project. Again, every bid that we do is a unit price contract, so those unit prices or those units can overrun or underrun during construction. And I believe this was on an approximately $233,000 contract. We ran over, I think, $8,500, so pretty acceptable percentage.
Within the limits.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, well within the limits, yes, sir. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I actually have four items that I would like to bring up all at once and ask for unanimous consent to consider today. These are all resolutions authorizing agreements with community service organizations.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider all four resolutions today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted for all four.
Move for passage.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, as I mentioned, these are all resolutions establishing agreements with community services organizations for receipt of community development block grant monies. Those four agencies are the Etowah Free Clinic, Snell Grove Civitan Center, let's see, the Summer Enrichment Program of Etowah County, and 13th Place. So I think these are all agencies we funded in the past, and these are all agencies that perform a vital service in the community.
Any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all four resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all four.
Any further business, new business?
Mr. President, I have a resolution I'd like to ask for unanimous consideration this morning. It's a resolution deeding a street right of way along Rabbit Town Road. This is to allow business on Rabbit Town Road to be able to access their building from Rabbit Town Road.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'll ask for approval, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote? I guess we've already discussed that, Bills.
I think so.
About all you could discuss on that one.
I think so.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, I'll just add to that, that Rabbit Town Road, in case you don't know where it is, it's in the extreme eastern bounders of our city, and it runs on into Glen Cove. It's out near the firing range, out behind, back to supply in that area in East Gaston.
Anybody that ever hunted rabbits knows where it is.
Know where Rabbit Town Road is.
Okay, now we're down to department reports. Committees and boards. I'm sorry, you can come on up now. I jumped a gun a while ago.
I stole a little bit of his thunder, but he's going to explain this thing to us.
Good morning, council. My name's Craig Scott with the Gaston Public Library Adult Services Department, and along with Amanda, we had a delegation go down to Montgomery last Friday, and with the intent of bringing back a convention, the Alabama Library Association... The Alabama Library Association gave our presentation, and it went over pretty well. They voted eight nothing, unanimous, to bring the 2016 convention to Gaston. What does that mean? It's four to 500 librarians that'll be in town for three days, two nights, so lots of hotel rooms. Many of the librarians are women, and they like to shop. So we think that'll help our shops along Broad Street and in the county and city here, and restaurants too. So April of 2016, watch out, you got a bunch of librarians in town.
Very good.
Thank you.
I could say something, go on, leave that alone. We're just going to welcome.
Get on your best behavior, please.
Any more department reports? Remarks by the mayor and council? Mayor, would you like to go first?
Yes, I would. I want to thank Amanda and Craig for all the work and all her staff at the library. I went to Huntsville with them when they accepted an award a few months back, and they really are on the ball at the library. If you want to know what's going on, you just keep up with the paper and look at their webpage. I still say outside of maybe Courtyard Restaurant at lunch, that's the busiest place in town on the day in and day out, and they do a really great job. Somebody up here said something about the librarians, you know, they like to get out of town, they loosened up a little bit, I don't know. We're looking forward to them coming to town. We appreciate what you do. Thanks.
Councilman Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. And again, I'll also thank the library for the job that they do. They really do an outstanding job, and we really have one of the best rated libraries in the state of Alabama, if not the best, the best, number one librarian. So you are, we have a lot to be thankful for, and I would like to just encourage us to take advantage of all the services that they provide for us at the library. It goes from the children, the infants, all the way to seniors and the activities that they have at the library. So please participate and take part of all the services that we have at the library. I'm going to tell you who that was that said that about the librarians. But I guarantee you, you know, everybody's idea about a librarian is that French roll, you know, and the ponytail and the horn-rimmed glasses, you know, just wait till they get here in April and see what the librarian will do. They like to have fun, just like the rest of us. They are entitled to enjoy life, just like us all. And the other thing I have, Buster, next Monday is the last Jazz at the Waterfall, so we're going to encourage everybody to come on out next Monday and enjoy Jazz at the Waterfall, Jazz at Monday. Curly will have hot dogs and whatever. Curly Dogs. We got a new name for them, Curly Dogs. So come on out and enjoy that. It has really grown. It has really grown, it has really been good this year. So we thank the city for, and we thank Kate and the city for this activity being sponsoring our city every Monday during the summer months. Again, Litchfield Middle School, Oscar Adams Elementary School, I mentioned those because they're in District One, but I also encourage you to not let that discourage you because you don't have a school in your system or you don't have children in the school, not to become a participant and work with our educators in our school systems. They need your help, they need your assistance. So anything that you can do, and Oscar Adams Elementary PTO dues $3 a year, and Litchfield's maybe five, but I'm going to encourage you all to join those parent-teacher organizations so that we can move forward with the training of our kids in those schools. Thank you.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Porch, I'll just use a phrase that the young people use nowadays, since it's the last event, turn up. What they say now, I believe, so.
Everyone turn up.
There you go, there you go, all right. So I'm just going to take a moment to quickly talk a little bit about an article that I saw earlier, no, actually it was last week when I saw this article. But Alabama was, you know, at the top of the list, at the top of another dubious list in terms of the percentage of its population receiving disability benefits. Folks, you know, that, you know, and I'm sure, I've got family members that receive disability benefits. There are some people out there that should be receiving some level of public assistance. But these types of things work against us from a political standpoint when we're engaged in industrial recruiting. I can remember a time back in 96, 95, 96, when I was just entering the human resources field, when Alabama, the state of Alabama had three knocks against it. Tort reform, we didn't have any, so we were, we had the plague as far as business was concerned because we had no tort reform. Our training costs were through the roof. Whenever a business wanted to come here, they had to spend a boatload of money getting the population ready to work. And then, of course, corporate tax infrastructure. We weren't business-friendly back then. We've made some strides to get better as it relates to those three things. As many of you know, we have tort reform now. We've probably got one of the better technical training models in the country, and our corporate tax infrastructure borders on the point of being welfare. We've kind of made the turn and might have gone too far as it relates to that. But I say all that to say this, you know, politically, when you're listening to people talk about jobs, and I feel so, it feels so refreshing to be able to say this outside of a political scenario. I can say it, I can speak plainly. I'm amongst friends, I know that. It feels good to be able to, you know, always understand when these people are coming to you and they're proclaiming to be able to create jobs and go out and serve as an ambassador for the city and draw jobs. Oh, if it were that easy. I mean, really, if it were that easy, you know, everybody in the city would be employed, everybody in the state would be gainfully employed with a good-paying job, but it's really not that simple. And it's, and it takes a collaborative effort from the standpoint of this community to market this community as a community where a business wants to invest and start an operation. It takes the city, government, working together, much like you've seen this mayor and council do for a number of years. It takes our education system presenting itself as one that prepares a workforce that's ready to work, that requires little investment when they step on the job. It takes our community, being a community that is committed to hard work and not a community that will serve as a drain on a new entity. I mean, I always like to put myself in the seat of a business owner who might, who had money to invest. Where would I go? I would go where I'm going to be able to find a good workforce, a workforce that's going to help me to produce a good quality product and cost me as little as possible. So please keep that in mind when you listen to people who are not credentialed to talk about whether or not they can bring jobs. Challenge them. Challenge them on those things that I've just mentioned. Challenge them on those things that I've mentioned, and challenge them on the technicalities behind their ideas. And you'll be amazed at what you find out about these folks. So I'm off my soapbox, as Rob says, I'm off my soapbox. But again, you know, in a political scenario, we get a lot of promises. Challenge these folks when they make those promises. The last thing I wanted to mention today is the Gaston City Titans. We talked about the game on Friday. So the Titans, congratulations to the Gaston City Titans. They defeated the number-one team in the state, Bob Jones, and beat them soundly, I might add. And one thing I do want to say, we petitioned people to go out and support. Folks came out and supported. That stadium was packed. So again, I'm sure those young people, they demonstrated it. They really appreciated the support that they got, and that's the way it works. Those young men will play hard. I know I did. They play hard when people come out and support them. So let's continue to do that. There's another big game this weekend, I think. So let's just go out and continue to support that football team, and maybe come December, we'll have us a state champion here. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Avery?
Yep. The only problem, Deborah, was we were ranked five in the state. We beat number one. Now we're six in the state, and the number-one team is seventh. So we went down, and so did they. I mean, it's unreal. But Hoover, the University of Hoover, with two losses moved up to number one in the state. Go figure that one. But anyway, you know, you were talking about people promising stuff, and it was real interesting. We've got a state race going on now, and I think the governor is talking about all of the jobs he created, I think it's 48,000 or so jobs, or 49, I can't remember the exact number. And he's probably correct, but what he failed to tell you is we lost about 40-some thousand jobs. So when you look at that and you really delve into it, you know, we actually probably netted maybe a thousand jobs after all those jobs he created. So you have to be, you know, like you say, do your homework. And you really have to do your homework when political people come around promising you a whole lot of things and telling you about the opponents. For instance, four years ago, we had a number of elected officials around this state who were being indicted for gambling, taking money from the gambling interests. I think Milton Greger down at Victory Land, then of course they were supposed to have taken money from the people at Green Track. And it was interesting, they were all Democrats. Lo and behold, I got an article here that says that at the same time that Porch Creek Indians sent all of those, all that money to Washington, to the Republican National Committee, and then the Republican National Committee in turn sent it back to the Alabama Republican Committee. And the guys who were pointing the finger that the Democrats were taking money from the Porch Creek Indians for gambling, same gambling interest, and those guys got elected. And, you know, today they're all talking about what they're going to do about Obamacare. Now, the last time I checked, nothing in the state of Alabama from the legislature came up with Obamacare. They didn't have, not the first vote. And people need to get away from that, and we're letting people's hoodwink us, or I could use another word, when it comes down to all of this. You would think that Obama's on the Alabama ballot somewhere. I don't know what he's running for, state representative, state senator, or governor or something. Everybody's running against him. Everybody. And if you look at what's happening in Washington, the lowest-rated people up in Washington is the Congress. So if you're going to be running against somebody, you would think they'd be running against Congress for not doing anything. Ladies and gentlemen, we just need to be mindful of all these tricks out here and these politicians who promise you all this stuff, and they pick one item and they run against it. I just think that over the next few weeks, we're going to probably tell a lot of facts, and that's what I've been doing all of my life, is being factual about things. You know, I had a young man who talked about all the negative stuff that's going on in the city, the districts, and all the houses need to be torn now, and then you find out they own one of them. So you just have to be real mindful of stuff like that. So please, ma'am, and please, sir, let's pay attention to the next few weeks at all the advertising that's going on, and if you could go to Alabama Political Reporter, and there's no knock on the Gaston Times, Andy, because I know you don't have anything to do with it, but they don't report what's happening around this state. We've got so much corruption going on right now, it's pathetic. And it goes back to our previous governor, Riley, and our president, Attorney General Strain, all these guys, or some of our local delegations. I mean, it's just ridiculous. And I don't understand why the local paper don't report it. And like I say, I know it's not, I'm not bashing Andy because he's just a reporter, but it's something wrong when we cover up or we report what we want to report and don't report the whole story. I would hope that our medias would report the entire story and then let the people make up their mind instead of our papers and our radio stations trying to shape people's minds about issues. If you feel that strongly about an issue, then you just need to go out and say who you're working for and who you're supporting as opposed to trying to pass it off as the truth. But anyway, I've got a few more weeks, and I'm going to have a press conference every week, and we're going to talk about the political issues. Thank you.
Councilman Stewart?
I would like to announce that the Harrelson Avenue Homeowners Association is going to have a meeting tonight at 6:00 at the library, so everybody on that street, come out and see what's going on. I really don't have any, well, I was going to embarrass Tom McKenzie. He just left. He's been sitting with us this morning, and I was going to embarrass him a little bit, but I'll go ahead and do it since he's gone. Some of us older people remember Casey Jones, don't we? Railroad hero. Tom McKenzie is Casey's grandson.
Yeah.
So I think that's pretty neat.
Yeah.
Tom would be embarrassed, but anyway, he's not. I don't have anything else. If I said anything, it'd be political, and I better not say it, so.
Councilman Ray?
You shifting the political over on me, or?
Yeah, you do the political thing, because I've got something else to say, too.
I'm going to delay anything that I had to say about a librarian, Billy. I married one of them.
But then you know exactly what we're talking about.
And I'd appreciate if you wouldn't talk about my wife.
Barbara, we love you.
If you go by the chamber, I wish you would look up and see the flag that's up there now. Went a long time, Shane, how long without having a flag over there? Forever. But it looks real good, Mayor, it really does, and thanks to the people that had anything to do with it, and to the Patriot Association that furnished the flag. Had to get that in. That's all I got.
Before the mayor goes on, Mr. President, Councilman Avery, you know, there's some very right-wing remarks that you made there, and I'll lift a few of those up, and we'll be expounding on those in the next couple of weeks also.
Mayor?
I just forgot to introduce a special person we have here today, Pastor Ty Dillon. Stand up, Pastor, we want to welcome you. He's at the Living Truth Church in East Gaston, formerly the College Heights Baptist Church. Glad to have you with us today.
Right.
Yes, sir.
And I was with one of his associate members up in Nashville this weekend at the football game, and they said, well, yeah, they said we got a church now in Gaston, Alabama, so, yeah. Small, small world. Yeah.
Anybody else up here have anything else to say? We don't, like everybody, wait before we adjourn. I got my time yet.
We're going to cut you off.
I'm going to quit calling on you. I'd like to thank everybody that came out Saturday, said music on, it was a great huge success. Curly Duramus, I really want to appreciate him. Tell him I appreciate him, everything he did. He cooked all the hot dogs, and they was all gone, did a good job. Now we can adjourn. Have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We adjourn.